Good evening, everyone. I call the City Council Committee of the Whole Meeting for October 7th, 2020 to order. At this time, we'll have a moment of silence. Thank you. If Alderman Gripp would please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Brian, if you'd please call the roll call. Dunn?
Here.
Doorman?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Lee? Gripp?
Here.
Condon?
Here.
Peacock?
Here.
Dickman?
Here.
Jobchin?
Here.
And Ambrose?
Here.
Ten present, Your Honor. Thank you, Brian. Good evening. As we begin the meeting of the City Council Committee of the Whole, I'd again like to welcome everybody in attendance and those who are viewing the meeting on your computer or mobile device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions. Please keep in mind you're talking to the council and also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region. We're happy you're participating as city government and ask that your participation please reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for everyone. At this time, if you have a cellphone, please silence or put it on or turn it off so it doesn't interfere with anybody talking in the chambers. If you wish to address the council on a specific item that appears on the committee agenda, you're encouraged to do so during that standing committee. You also have the opportunity to address the city council on the public with business portion at the end of the meeting. And when addressing the council, I'd ask you to step to the podium, wait to be recognized by myself as a committee chair, and speak to all of us as a body and not to any one individual. You are so please limit your remarks to no more than five minutes, and I ask that everyone please observe commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Thank you. Ms. Spiegel, City Administrator, any update tonight?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Very good, and we have no public hearings tonight, so we'll move right to Petition and Communications. I have one thing just to remind everybody FEMA for individual assistance is located out on Eastern Avenue in Garfield at the Annie Whitmire Pool Complex. They moved from Bentendorf to Davenport, and because we now are the most responsive place for folks in the state, they're extending their time to the 16th. But I'd encourage everyone listening and everybody here to pass the word that if anybody they know that had some concern with the deratio and damage, please go see our friends at FEMA. They're there on Saturdays also, okay? And I see, let's see, Alderman Jobchin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, next Tuesday, October 13th, 6:30 p.m. at Duck Creek Park Lodge, we'll be hosting a six-word meeting. We'll also have a go-to meeting option for those that would like to join via the Internet. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman McGinnis?
Thank you, Your Honor. I had a couple of things tonight. The, as usual, the census update. I really thought I would be done with this by now, and I'm sure you guys were all hoping I would be too. But we're not. We're on with it. The census continues. The census will be continuing, it appears, through October 31st. There are a handful of workers left that haven't been dismissed until they turn their materials in, and they are working, and their contracts have been extended to October 31st. I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to cut this phone off. So, sorry, I have too many phones in my room. In any case, so we are continuing, they are continuing to work across the city, both as enumerators, and they're cleaning up addresses that have not been answered, and we are helping them as a city and we're helping them as individuals as we can. So we also have people that are doing outreach, that are continuing to do outreach events. We also have the option to still do self-response, all of us who haven't, online at the website And so as of Wednesday, October 7th, on the first screen you're seeing is what's happening across the state and the county. We are, the state of Iowa is now at 99.9%, and that's great, but we're still not done. Word is, or word as I have it, is that Scott County is about 98% counted, so there's 2% there we still need to get, and they're probably in Davenport, because we are the largest city. So, but Scott County went up last week, Davenport jumps last week. We had some really good increases. I have been tracking this every day, and so I decided to step back today and look week to week. So we had a huge week, and Davenport had a huge week in self-response, and that's exciting because we need that work to keep happening along with all the great work of our enumerators. So we can look at the, if we could look at the graphic with the city. So self-response rates are tending to increase. We really haven't had any of our sort of, we have had our census tracks move out of any categories, but there are some that are red right now or tantalizingly close to being green, and that would be great. That means they've met or exceeded 2010, and some of those are very, very close to happening. So keep pushing. If you've got your, Alderman, with your census signs, please keep them out. If you don't, if you know people who haven't done their census, it is not too late, and it will not be too late for the next three weeks. If you belong to an organization that has, that does events, and you would like to have a census taker there, we can help you get that figured out. So please give me a call, and we'll do that. So that's really what I have on the census tonight. This is really good news, given how far behind we were in September, and so I'm excited about this. Scott County has overachieved its census data, its census gathering to 2010. We're not there yet with ours, but we're creeping up on it. And you know, we've got three weeks, guys, so we might do that. We'll just have to see. In any case, I also wanted to let you know that my ward meeting, which was scheduled for next Thursday night, it's gonna be in council chambers, September 12th at 6:30, will be virtual. I did yesterday have a positive test for COVID, and I don't, I can't be meeting with anybody in person for the next two weeks, so I will not see you at city council in person this week, of course, or next week, and we will just keep moving forward. But we will do a virtual third ward meeting, and we'll be sending instructions on how to do that. You guys all know that I am, it's a bit of a lecture. I have been very careful. I have been careful in following protocols and following distancing, all of that, social distancing, wearing a mask. I now have a positive test for COVID. I'm not feeling very good, but I'm okay, but it can happen to anybody, so please be careful. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderwoman Lee?
Thank you very much. Mayor, to follow up on what Marion just said, some recent data on COVID. We have a 16.8% positive case rate. The percentage of positive cases in the U.S. is only 4.7%. The cutoff that the governor set was 15% as it related to how the schools would operate. According to the Johns Hopkins Bloomberg, we are at 16.8. Our number of deaths are going up, and according to the New York Times, according to the scientists, the best way to evaluate the number of deaths is something called excess deaths, which is looking at what the rate would be and has been over time in the past, and what is happening this year, and how that changes. That's the excess deaths, rather than trying to say, oh, was this primarily COVID, or was this somebody already sick, and then, you know, it takes all that uncertainty out. We are not at about 205,000 deaths in the United States. The estimate based on excess deaths is going towards 270,000 deaths. This is something to take very seriously. And with that in mind, I am also going to continue holding my meetings virtually, and I'm going to have one this Thursday. It'll be on go-to meetings like the last ones have been, which Oswald has very kindly offered to call in and give us an update on neighborhood services and how things are going with that. So I'm very pleased. You'll be getting the information from the city, and also we'll be sending it out to people who we have email addresses for. The other thing I wanted to say is voting is open, early voting. I stopped in today to drop off my ballot. You just walk in, hand it to them, walk out, or you can vote there actually itself. The back of your ballot is almost all judges at different levels. There is a, there is a wonderful, oh, okay, there's a wonderful website called chooseyourjudges.org, and it's a questionnaire that you can answer questions to, and it'll tell you based on how you answer your questions, would you rather your judges be this way or that way. It'll tell you of the four Supreme Court judges for Iowa, which ones you should or shouldn't vote for based on your own preferences. It's a, it's really kind of interesting website, and I was also able to find information on almost all the rest of the judges in order to make informed decisions on whether I wanted to vote yes or no. So I really encourage you to not only pay attention to the front of the ballot, but also pay attention to the judges and do a little homework on the back of the ballot. So again, you can vote early. Thank you. Please do. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Lee. Alderman Gripp?
Thank you, Mayor. So last, last week, I think, on Monday, after a lot of anticipation, Gabe's playground opened at Vandevere Park, so it's been open for a little bit over a week. I had the opportunity to take my children there. It was a privately fundraised playground addition to Vandevere Park, and it's incredible. It was the work of a woman named Gloria, who wanted an all-inclusive playground for her grandson to play at, and it was her vision and her leadership that got us to the point that we have a really incredible playground at Vandevere. So it has been open for everyone to enjoy, and people have been enjoying it, but tomorrow at 4:00 p.m. we'll be doing the official ribbon cutting at Vandevere Park, so we would welcome anyone who's interested to attend. Please, you know, bring your mask, social distance, and it's outside, so that's a good, a good thing, but come and, come and celebrate a really great community effort. And then the second thing I had is I wanted to give some recognition to our staff, Cory and our staff, about our social media strategy and disseminating information to the public. We challenged you a couple of years ago to get better at this, and you really have. So when I started on council, I was probably doing three to four social media posts a week with all original content of stuff that I thought the public needed to know about and wasn't maybe fully aware of. And in the last year, I post less than one time a week because all of the information I think that the public needs to know and should be aware of is being pushed out through the city's social media channels. So I find myself sharing what the content you guys have put together, which is really the way it should be. So thank you to Jerry and Kurt, and then Owen with PD, and Robin with Public Works, and Ryan. And if I've missed anybody else, thank you to you all. We challenge you to get better, and you've gotten better, so I just want to recognize that. That's all, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Alderman Peacock?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really appreciate it. There's a term that Cory and a lot of the people like to say, newer council members, and as a newer council member, I am sincerely appreciative of city staff as I, now as we now, now, 10th month now, as I, you know, got my feet wet and everything, I kid you not, I am so appreciative, not only the intellect, the commitment that the city staff have to assisting the council, and from my mouth to yours, I greatly appreciate it. And go, I get 2K some points, Mal and her team, the finance as we get prepared for the bond rating system tomorrow, Nevada Lampke and Sergeant Harris who assisted me with my ward meeting, truly, we talk about true top-notch professionals, and I greatly appreciate that. There are budget talks coming up pretty soon. I implore, if you're an active citizen in Davenport, be an active participant, and when budget talks come up, we need your input as well. Yesterday, something was discussed in relation to Davenport schools, and I like to really say a quick bit, it won't take long. I truly believe that we should be partners with the Davenport school system. Everybody has their polarization of what camp you're in, but when you're trying to grow Davenport, when you're trying to tell Davenport is a great city, one of the things, one of the indicators of a great city is its schools, and that's why you see a lot of people go to these other places. So if we are not engaged as a city council, then shame on us. We're, this is not a servant-client relationship. This is the city council. We are in charge of the safeguard of the city. So hopefully that who's ever in charge and being great partners with the, with the school district, and let them know that we do care, because I know I will attend pretty much all school, school board meetings, as I am a gay citizen, not as an older person, but as someone who cares for kids. And I implore everybody on this council, mayor, city staff, let's help the school district anywhere we can possible, because we need to be great partners. That's all I have.
Thank you, Alderman Peacock. Anyone else? Very good. We'll move on. So four areas for discussion. Our first area is community development. Alderman Gripp will lead, and Alderman Lee will assist. Alderman Gripp?
Thank you, Your Honor. There are three items on the community development agenda this evening. Item number one is a resolution setting a public hearing on the proposed conveyance of the heritage property located at 501 West Third Street to Foundation Housing. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this resolution? Anyone from the council? This item will move on. Item number two is a resolution approving case F-20-09, being the request of Scott County Family YMCA for a final plat of Scott County Family YMCA first edition for a three-lot subdivision on 13.36 acres, more or less, located northwest of the intersection of East River Drive and East Fourth Street. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? I will make comment on this item. So we've had some great news in the last couple of months of two downtown developments, one on River Drive and one on East Second Street. We'll be adding about 600 units to our downtown neighborhood, so hopefully more than 600 new downtown residents coming onboard in 2021, which will be great for our downtown businesses. As a part of that, this YMCA development is a big part of that. There's, there's further development to come, so it's being split into three parcels. The one is the YMCA. If you're tracking, it is nearing completion. It will be open in December, I believe. It's a beautiful building that will anchor the east side of the downtown. There's a frontage to Fourth Street that does not have any development tied to it yet, and then there's a parcel on the north side of the property that will be a apartment development, okay? And so this is a very good thing to developmentalize, to have happen, not only for our downtown, but for our city, and we thank the, you know, this name will soon be old, but the Scott County Family YMCA for their partnership downtown and their commitment to keeping the YMCA downtown. With that, we'll move to item number three, which is a resolution approving case F-19-15, being the request of Terry Witson for a final plat of the Witson subdivision on 1.69 acres at 3802 Boise Avenue, containing three lots zoned for single and two-family residential. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, I would ask Alderwoman Lee to please set the agenda. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That concludes community development this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Alderman Lee. Next area?
Your Honor, we lost Marion.
I see that.
Okay.
You pausing? Okay, do it. We're pausing to redo.
Hello? Hello?
Hey, we got you now. We can hear you. You hear us? Very good. All right, cool. Thank you. All right, thanks, everyone, for that pause. The next area is public safety. Alderman Jobchin will discuss, so public safety, please. Alderman Jobchin and Alderman, I'm sorry, Alderman Ambrose and Alderman Jobchin.
Thank you, Honor. First item for the discussion is a third consideration ordinance amending Schedule 6 of Chapter 10.96, entitled Speed Livest by adding Utica Ridge Road from Crow Creek Road to Veterans Memorial Parkway as a 35 mile an hour street. Wait for the public counsel. The second item is a first consideration ordinance amending Schedule 1 of Chapter 10.96, entitled Snow Routes by Adding and Deleting Various Streets. Anybody from the council? If someone from the public wants to know what we're talking about, you can find that information on our social media platform. And number four is a resolution approving the following streets, lanes. First consideration ordinance Schedule 5 of Chapter 10.96, entitled Four-Way Stop Intersections by Deleting West Sixth Street at Vine. Anybody from public council? Number four is a resolution approving the following streets, lanes, and public ground closures on the listed dates and times. The first one is St. Mary's Church, Farewell Celebration Mass and Procession, 516 Fillmore Street, Sunday, October 11th, 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Closure Mass, Fillmore Street from West Sixth Street South to just north of the alley. Procession, northmost, the northmost travel lane on West Third Street from Fillmore Street to North Main Street. And this will be voted on the agenda. Anybody from the public council? Number second, the second one is Scott Tunncliff, the Hilltop Urban Taste, 433 West 15th Street, Saturday, October 17th, 2020, 9:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. Closure, Scott Street from West 15th Street South to the alley. Anybody from the public council? Next one is St. Paul Lutheran Church, Trunk and Tree, 2136 Brady Street, Sunday, October 25th, 2020, 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. West High Street, the closure will be from West High Street between North Main and Brady Street, North-South Alley between West High Street and West Pleasant Street, and North Main Street and Brady Street. Anybody from the public, the council? The next one is Tom Simmons Veterans Memorial Prey Downtown, Wednesday, November 11th, 2020, 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. The parade route closure, police control, south of Western Avenue from Fifth Street to Second Street, east of Second Street to Western Avenue, to Main Street, north to Main Street, from Second Street to Fourth Street, west on Fourth Street from Main Street to finish at the Scott Cuddy Courthouse. This is a same one we've had for several years, so most people should be aware of it. Anybody from the public council? Number five is a motion approving the following noise variance requested at various events, listed dates and times. St. Mary's Church, Farewell Celebration Mass, Sunday on October 11th, 2020, 3:00 p.m. to 5:30 p.m. Outdoor mass, music over 50 dBAs. This will also be voted later on in the agenda. Anybody from the public council? Davenport Parks and Recreation, Parks and Recreation, Not So Haunted, Fejuberry, Fejuberry Park, 1800 West 12th Street, Sunday, October 24th, 2020, 11:00 a.m. to 5:15 p.m. Outdoor music, over 50 dBAs. Anybody from the public council? The last one is Tom's, yeah. Oh. Alderman Gripp?
Thank you. Could we have Chad Dyson come up and explain what this is and why Ray keeps getting all the cool programmatic stuff over at Fejuberry?
We were preparing for the time capsule.
Good evening, Chad Dyson, Parks and Rec Director. So this is a first-year event that we are doing. It's one of our COVID virtual events. It is a themed drive-through through the hillside of Fejuberry Park. We'll have various costume characters. It's, it's a haunt-free, so they won't be scary, so bring all ages are welcome, and there'll be music and social distance activities for all, so we're excited to have this come.
All right, thanks. I don't think Alderman Doorman will be there, will you? Can you work that into the wedding plans? Okay. Number five is a motion approving the, that's Tom Simmons Veterans Day Parade Downtown, Wednesday, November 11th, 2020, 8:30 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Outdoor music, marching bands, performance over dBAs. Hopefully, we'll be able to have some bands, but we'll, Alderman Masson kind of puts our, Mayor Masson puts those together. How's that looking for this year? Good. All right. The next item is a motion approving beer and liquor license applications. I won't go through those, but if you're interested, you can find them on the city website, and I ask Alderman Jobchin to set the agenda.
I move all items be placed on the consent agenda except for the two items in four and five regarding St. Mary's Church Farewell Celebration Mass.
All right. Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, Marion, can you hear us?
I'm there. I say, yea.
Marion, you sound strong, just like our great president. Thanks.
Thanks, Ray.
Next area is Public Works. Alderman Dunn and Alderman Doorman will lead that discussion. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have nine items on the Public Works agenda this evening. Item number one is a second consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 13.34.060, entitled Requirements for Stormwater Management Plans, defining the documentation required prior to a consensual permit issuance. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution of acceptance for the FY20 Contract Sewer Repair Program for Legacy Corporation of East Moline. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution approving the cooperative agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation for the Veterans Memorial Parkway Trail Extension Project in the amount of $530,917. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Alderwoman Lee?
I just want to say that Mayor and I did receive a note from a constituent in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution authorizing Nicole Gleason, Assistant City Administrator/ Public Works Director, to serve as primary signatory, and Cory Spiegel, City Administrator, to serve as certifying officer for the purpose of signing and executing transactional real estate documents with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers regarding the structural repairs of the seawall at River Heritage Park. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution renaming the city park in northwest, northeast Davenport, Jersey Farms Park. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six is a motion approving a contract for the FY21 to FY22 sanitary sewer lining and manhole rehabilitation program design and preparation of bid documents to Strand and Associates Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $57,420. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number seven is a motion approving change order number one for professional services between the city of Davenport and Bolton and Mink Incorporated in the amount not to exceed between the City of Davenport and Bolton and Mink Incorporated for the Black Hawk Creek Stabilization Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number eight is a motion approving the contract for plumbing and pipe fitting services at the Water Pollution Control Plant to Reagan Mechanical Incorporated at Davenport, Iowa. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. And item number nine is a motion awarding the contract for the Union Arcade Vault Project to Emery Construction of Moline, Illinois, in the amount of $94,482. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. And Alderman Dorman, would you set the agenda, please?
I move to place all items on the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. The agenda is set, and back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Last area for discussion tonight is Finance. Alderman Condon and Alderman Peacock will lead that discussion. Alderman Condon, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have seven items on Finance this evening. Item number one is a first consideration ordinance amending Chapter 2.82, entitled Management of Public Records. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Anyone from council? That item will move on. Item number two is a resolution approving the purchase of five Chevrolet Tahoe SUVs from Carl Chevrolet of Ankeny, Iowa, in the amount of $189,890.10. CIP 24022. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address that item? Anyone from council? Alderman Lee.
Thank you very much, Alderman Condon. Could I ask someone involved with Fleet, do you ever look at buying hybrid vehicles? Who would be? Thank you, Nicole. So, because there are hybrid SUVs out there, and SUVs are a major contributor to climate change.
Right. So, Nicole Gleason, Public Works Director. So, when we set the CIP, we look at the amount of money we have for Fleet, and then kind of what's available, and also kind of the expertise of our mechanics, because we do try to do most of the work in-house. So, generally, from a cost perspective at this point, we would be able to buy less still, and we just don't have as much of that expertise in-house at this point. But as things do become more cost favorable, or, for example, with the grant we accepted a couple of weeks ago in regards to the fuel emissions, when we can get grants to kind of help buy lower emissions vehicles and pair with the money we have, we do do that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Anyone else from council? I appreciate that you always bring up that question, and eventually, the title turn, maybe with the helpful nudge from us. Yeah. Item number three is a resolution approving the purchase of a Toro GM 5900 mower from MTI Distributing, Inc. of Grimes, Iowa, for the cost of $101,712.94. Anyone from the public wishing to address that item? Anyone from council? That'll move on. Item number four is a resolution approving the purchase of transit signage from Iowa Prison Industries of Anamosa, Iowa, in the amount of $106,311.20. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address that item? Anyone from council? Alderman Lee.
Could I ask someone who, thank you, Ms. Gleason. Do you know, oh, I'll wait till you come on. I assume that this is prison labor?
Yes. So, what this is, is it was a bid item, and Iowa Prison Industries does frequently win our signed bids. They are generally, I would say, at least 20% less expensive. This particular one is utilizing some of our transit grant funding to improve our wayfinding for transit signage, and also improving safety by making it more clear where the preferable places to stand for our primary transit routes are, for the efficiency of the buses and the safety of the patrons.
Do you know how much the prison labor gets paid an hour?
I really do not know that, no.
Could you look into that for me, please? Because if they're competing against our local companies, because I suspect they get paid substantially less.
Yeah, and that again, that would kind of come back to purchasing rules questions, but we can look, sure.
Would you please? Go get back to me. Thank you.
Anyone else from council? Alderman Peacock.
As I looked over this, actually, I was going to have a side chat with Corey about it, but since Alderman, we brought it up before council, the, I think my colleague said it best, we just had a workshop on a bidder ordinance, if I'm not mistaken, and people talk about, well, we have to go to the most responsible bidder. We're talking about prison labor. Prison labor, and we are rewarding that contract to people who pay an advantage to whatever things that they may have done. Is this what the City of Davenport wants to be known for? I'm gonna say that again. Is this what City of Davenport wants to be known for? A lot of my colleagues say, well, it's the great city. We just, we paying for prison labor to do something that we can get somebody else to do. So, we are paying to gratify, to glorify prison labor. And I would implore staff to really look at this like time now, and say, this is the best way going forward.
Thank you. Anyone else from council? And item number six is a resolution setting October 28th, 2020, as the date for the sale of the General Obligation Corporate Bonds Series 2020B, and approving the preliminary official statement. Is there anyone from the public? Sorry? Did I skip five? Okay, can we come back? Okay. So, we're on six now. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address the sale of the General Obligation Corporate Bonds? Anyone from council? All right, now, I'm going to go back to five. My apologies.
Your, Mr. Chair. I don't know what you're calling.
I'm sorry, I didn't see you. You wish to address number six?
The bonds.
Great.
Is that which we're on now? I got a little confused.
Yeah, I didn't. I definitely muffed that up. But we're on number six, and if you'd like to comment, you can.
Do we have someone from staff to explain why we're going out at this time? Because I think it's very curious to come up and explain to the public.
Mallory Merritt, Finance. Yes, so the city uses PFM as our financial advisor, and this decision was made at their direction.
And what was the reason behind it?
They're actually advising many of their municipal clients to go ahead and do these bond sales, especially if you have a large bond sale, which we do. So, they're advising their municipal clients to perform these bond sales, if they can, in advance of the election.
And I guess to interpret that is, the outcomes of this election, one of the candidates will raise taxes and regulations, which will probably have a negative impact to the economy.
Let's refrain from political discussions at the dais.
Well, I think the public should be aware of what they're voting for. I know my friend, Alderman.
Refrain from political discussions at the dais.
Alderman Lee explained how important it is to go out and vote, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Voting's important, but picking a side is not appropriate at the dais.
Was very important.
Item number six, we'll move on. Jumping back up to item number five, a resolution approving a contract for the License Plate Reader Project to Vigilant Solutions of Livermore, California, in the amount of $168,029. CIP 62007. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address that item? Alderman Ambrose.
Do we have a presentation?
We did not prepare one, no.
Well, there was a request yesterday, and I was told by staff there would be a presentation on how important this is on crankbait biting. I'm sad to hear that.
That was not my interpretation of our discussion yesterday.
Alderman Lee.
Would it be possible for someone to explain just a little bit about the technology? Thank you.
Corey Smith, IT Director. So, the council tasked us with upgrading and expanding the existing LPR system that we have now. So, that's what this proposal is. It'll be upgrading the two existing squad cars that we have now. It'll also be adding two fixed locations, one of those at Brady and, or Harrison and Locust, and the other one is at the Centennial Bridge.
And I understand it'll do more than read license plates?
It will read license plates, and in a limited capacity, it could see a number of occupants.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else from council wishing to address this item? All right, and if you'll bear with me, we'll jump back down to item number seven. Resolution authorizing the Finance Director to make the appropriate inter-fund transfers for the city's fiscal year 2020 financial records as required by the Iowa Administrative Code, City Finance Committee Agency, Chapter Two. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Anyone from council? And finally, on our agenda, we have purchases listed here that range from $10,000 to $50,000. We don't read each of those out loud, but they're listed here for your information. Alderman Peacock, would you please set the agenda?
I move to place all items on the consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. That concludes Finance, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Condon and Alderman Peacock. We have two items, a couple on the other ordinances, resolutions, and motions. First, is there a motion for suspension of the rules to vote on the items below? There's a motion and a second. Brian, please call the rule for suspension of the rules.
Dorman?
Yes.
Grip?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Jobjen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Lee? Ambrose? Peacock?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
And Dunn?
Yes.
Nine yeses and one no, Your Honor.
Very good. The rules are suspended, so now the items. Resolution approving the following street and lane closures on the listed date and time to hold an outdoor event. St. Mary's Church Farewell Celebration Mass and Procession, 516 Fillmore Street, Sunday, October 11th, 2020, 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Closure for the Mass, Fillmore Street from West Sixth Street South to just north of the alley. Procession, Northernmost Travel Lane on West Third from Fillmore Street to Main Street. Is there any public with comment? Seeing none, is it? Alderman, motion and a second. Does anybody have discussion? Alderman Grip.
I just had a question. Could somebody tell me, is the procession on foot?
So, I know that they're carrying a statue from St. Mary's down to St. Anthony's. I believe that's going to be in a truck, but my understanding is it's going to be on foot, yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's correct. Most are on foot. Okay. That's it. Anyone else? Okay, very good. Brian, please call the rule.
Peacock?
Yes.
Ambrose? Lee? Grip?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Jobjen?
Yes.
Dorman?
Yes.
And Dunn?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor.
Very good. And the last item is a motion approving the noise variance for this event on the listed date. St. Mary's Church Farewell Celebration Mass, Sunday, October 11th, 2020, 3:00 p.m. to 5:30 p.m., is an outdoor mass and music over 50 DBA. Is there any public with comment? Very good. Motion and a second. Anybody want to discuss? Seeing none, please call the rule, Brian.
Dunn?
Yes.
Jobjen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Peacock?
Yes.
Grip?
Yes.
Dorman?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
And Lee?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion passes. Now, we go to the next item. Is there any public with business? If there is, please step to the podium, give your name, address, or ward, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know what city. You'll have five minutes. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Matt Wissing from the Fifth Ward. It's the first time in my life I've had an alderman with the same first name, so that's nice. Anyway, I'm here to tell you, or I'll just mention that I happen to be the Chair of the City Housing Commission. As such, we're a body of five people that are appointed, and we volunteer and oversee the Section Eight housing, and the scattered site public housing, and the heritage. I didn't speak at the time, which is fine, there's going to be a public hearing, but I just wanted to impress upon you, I know the reason that that's happening. You've made a financial decision to not invest back in that building. I'm sure there's pros and cons. You folks weigh those. But I would hope that the city, in light of those savings, would put as much efforts into providing low-cost, safe housing for citizens of Davenport. Alderman Grip mentioned that there's some great developments coming up, there's some stuff going on. There's been a lot of things going on. It's, you can tell there's lots of people downtown, because you see about every other person walking a dog, which is great. The more people in our community, the better. But I think we need to make a commitment as a community to provide some low-cost, safe housing. I'm not saying that you need to do it, but provide some incentives for developers locally, hopefully, first. If there are outside groups that would like to invest in affordable housing, that's fine too. So, I just wanted to express those concerns to the council and hope that you keep those in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Amanda Sharp, I'm in the First Ward. Hi again. I'm sure a lot of you know why I'm here. I'm still pretty upset that the live feed is getting cut every day at, every Wednesday on the City Mount Council meetings. I've been coming here almost every Wednesday and talking, talking about racism in our community and calling it out when I see it. To be honest with you, this is not something I enjoy. It's terrible. It makes me very uncomfortable to come up here and address you, our leaders. But change does not come from being comfortable, and I believe what myself and my friends are asking is not something extraordinary or something that should have so much pushback. We are simply asking that you listen and learn from people in our community who are marginalized. Together, we can uplift everyone and make Davenport a safe environment for all. Together, we can make racism a priority and not silence it. Our goal is not to come here and make you mad or hurt your feelings, it's to invoke understanding and to create positive change in our community. It's to bring important issues to your attention, as you have more power than I do, to use your voices or to at least consider using your voices. Everything I have said here at these meetings has been truthful, to my knowledge, and has been well researched. I stand by my comments made by myself and my fellow activists, and I do not think anything was ever said that deserved to be silenced and censored. To learn that public comments have been turned off for the live view, live feed viewing gutted me, not only for myself, but for the brave men and women who have come here and bared their souls, asking to be heard just to be ruthlessly silenced without warning. Nobody even told us it was happening. My heart hurts for the people who watch at home. Why are we denying them access to learn how the community feels, to have a heartbeat with us? Silencing people, especially people of color, when they're trying to talk about racism is not the answer, and is oppression at its core. It's time to listen and amplify Black and Brown people in our community, and show that their concerns are valid, and there also are concerns, and to prove that Black Lives Matter, not just to say it. I'm sure you're aware that speaking out against injustice comes with a price. I will continue to come here and pay it, and I will continue to get backlash from members of my community, no matter how uncomfortable it may be. I will continue to talk about racism, and I will refuse to be silenced. Please consider turning the live feedback on for public comment, or at the bare minimum, hold a public hearing and vote on it. I would like to know where each and every one of you stand on this matter. I would like to leave you today with a quote from the late and great Representative John Lewis. "A democracy cannot thrive where power remains unchecked and justice is reserved for a select few. Ignoring these cries and failing to respond to this movement is simply not an option. For peace cannot exist where justice is not served." Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Dennis Platt from the Sixth Ward, and I wanted to just say a couple of Dennis Platt from the Sixth Ward, and I wanted to just say a couple of things in support of that young lady. I've been coming here for a couple of years and mostly discussing all of these same things. Not always the same thing over and over, but the same topic over and over. Recently, I got to see a program where, that reviewed the Sheba Report. I'm not sure you're familiar with that, but it's a national report, it's done on the state of housing in Black America. And for 2020, they released it September 24th. And I was shocked to learn that nationally, seven of 10 future homebuyers are people of color. Seven of 10. Nationally, right now, seventy-six percent of white, non-Hispanic families own homes, forty-seven percent of Black families own homes. There's quite a disparity. Marginalized communities, and this was outlined in that report, routinely continue to be underserved by both the banking and real estate industries. About six weeks ago, during a public hearing for the Kaiser Slaughter Square Project, which is going to take about three-quarters of a million dollars, I asked for the demographics of the population that uses that park, and I've heard nothing. I've been there a couple of times, and I have not seen a person of color there, ever. Maybe it happens, but it looks to me like that money probably isn't being broadly, it's not broadly benefiting the city. And when I voiced concerns about this at the time, one person, I think it was Mr. Grip, responded right away and had a very complete and full defense of why the city has to spend this money on this project now. In that same meeting, a young Black man addressed the council about housing ideas. And it did not appear to me that anybody from Economic Development got with that young guy. Maybe they did. I hope they did. Several months ago, an owner of a cafe on Fifth Street requested that the city spend a quarter of a million dollars on her street, so that its appearance would be consistent with, with her business, with the appearance of her business. And as far as I know, ninety-nine percent of the people that are patrons at that restaurant are white people. And I'm not going to accuse the city council of running any kind of affirmative action program for white people. Although it does appear, most of the money we spend on people of color is centered around the criminal justice system. Several weeks ago, it appeared the council had agreed to appoint some people to work on these issues of police reform and race relations. I haven't heard any more about it. There's no transparency, there's no wheels moving. I've talked to some of the people that I thought were mixed up in it, and they said, "Well, I don't know. I don't know what's happening." I hope you do. And as older person Peacock pointed out, our school system has issues, there's all kinds of evidence that our problems aren't just confined to schools, that it's in housing, it's in economic development, and it's in criminal justice. We've got all kinds of documentation disparities based on race.
Sir, if you'd finish up, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
In any event, you've got a lot of things to work on here, and I'd like to see some solutions that are transparent, that they're possible, that they're reasonable, and that they're effective. If you don't fix anything, it doesn't get fixed. It's got to be effective. And finally, I'd like to recognize Marion for all the work she's done on the census. And I'd like to thank her for wearing a mask and not shedding virus all over the building. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there a motion to adjourn? Second. All in favor? Wait a second, we already voted. Okay, roll call, since you want to roll call. We called the question and we voted, but since you think there's a question, we'll roll call.
Ambrose? Dickman? Peacock?
No.
Condon?
No.
Grip?
No.
McGinnis?
No.
Lee?
No.
Dorman?
No.
And Dunn? One yes and nine no, Your Honor.
Anyone else that would like to speak? If you'd like to speak now, ma'am, please.
My name's Kelly Cruz, I'm from Rock Island First. A few months ago, when there were some tragedies that happened elsewhere in our country, I heard a lot from, you know, not just you folks here or the police department here, but leaders all over the place saying that we need to start listening to people and, you know, that this is the time that, that something needs to change. And I think that there's been a lot of disappointment about, you know, the extent that, that we've been able to do that. I think it's important to kind of know going in that when you, when you say that you're going to listen to people and find out what the problems are in, in, you know, whatever you're in charge of, that people are going to tell you stuff that you don't want to hear, and it's really important as a leader to not get defensive about that. You know, as Dennis was saying, there's kind of been a lack of communication. You know, if anybody should know what's going on around in Davenport, it would be him. He tends to be at every important meeting and every, you know, whether it's the school board or, or whatever's going on, so. You know, if the people that are the most engaged, that have, you know, the time and the, and the passion and whatever to, to get involved in these things that, that much don't, are not quite sure what's going on, then, you know, what about the people that don't? It's kind of what I'm, what I'm going for. This might have been mentioned already, because I was driving, I wasn't able to keep track of things, but evidently, when people are watching this in real time, it gets cut off before the public comments part of it. Somebody asked about that, and they said something about like libel laws or something like that, which, I mean, I'm not a lawyer, but it seemed a little bit. I don't think that that's a thing that the city would have to worry about in that case. And if we had the UK's libel laws, it'd be a little different. But that's another thing that kind of goes against the spirit that we're trying to, you know, the new spirit that we're trying to, to put forth of like, you know, listening to people and, you know, rebuilding our communities after these things happen. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'm pausing. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.